Matthew 17:20
17:20 of Matthew
You will not be impossible unto you Matthew 17:26
And we read in Matthew 19:26
The man is not able to do what God is able to do
And that which is impossible with men is possible with God
This is a story about
What are the things it said about?
A pagan god told him to go to the Lord and say, "I want to go to heaven" What Jesus replied? You must go and sell the hairs and give to the poor Take up the cross and follow me He asked for heaven but he taught some other things He taught some other things
And he instructed under the root and what the root he thought was different
But you know what happened?
And so he went on his way
And Jesus said You have to enter into the kingdom of God at Israel
And so he said these words here
And so everything is possible with God Wherever you go, you will not be able to do what God is able to do
In which place you say, "Lord, I can't, I'll call God"
Jeremiah 32:17
32:17 of Jeremiah, what it says
There is nothing hard for me, there is nothing hard for me to do
May God's holy name be glorified
You must believe, everything is possible with God If it is possible with God, whom is it possible? Your children
And it is possible with you, his children And how many of you believe this? And what are the things is possible with God?
And Christ rightly preached this The one who believes, whatever he does, will make a great difference
And he that believed on me, and so he can do great things that I performed And so what did it said in Tamil?
Tamil says, "A boy with four legs, a girl with 16 legs"
And so if the mother goes four feet, the young one must go off 16 feet Is it right or not? And Jesus spoke very beautifully
In this time, we cannot do what God is able to do, we cannot do what we can't do
And so what is possible with God is possible with us in these days
And so he gives such power only to his children
And you must believe this And you should not say, "He is God" and so he performs
He is not going to go to your level, your father's level
And don't take that and he is a God, don't take in that level and consider him as your own father And what he performs
And so, and so he gives all power to you If it is possible with him, it is possible with you I will tell you, the man is not able to do what God is able to do
I am not confusing you and that which is possible with God is possible with you and nothing is impossible unto you
Correct or not?
Am I right?
If you can do what God is able to do, you can do what you can't do
And that which is possible with God is possible with you And he stops rain And he causes the rain to fall
And so he gave the same power to prophets What is the power of the prophets?
And they have power to shut the heavens
A priest said, "Do you want to go to Israel or go to Syria?"
And sending the prophet and he asked, "Do the sun must go down or in?" And what has he said?
Do not go down, it is easy to ask him to go
And so he made it to perform immediately
And likewise Joshua, he stopped the rain
And he made Joshua to make the sun to stand still
A man who has said something like this, it has been a long time since he has heard it
And so the Bible says, "And there was no other word that God heard, the voice of men"
And so the word of creation is new
And how it comes in you
Since the spirit of God, the excellent spirit is dwelling in you And so you have to practice this with anointing And that which is possible with God is possible with you, you are his children and you are an inheritor and so it is possible with you with anointing
And with belief and must hear the sermon
Because until you have seen this path, you have negative thoughts
And the path that you travel, the trial that you have gone and so you all went negative and contrary and so you has to have the negative thoughts
And also you will fast
And you will fast and pray And you will say, "In the name of Jesus, I ask thee"
How are you doing? At the end of the prayer and when you had doubt and so one and a half prayers, the seven of our prayers will come to an end
So many of us are growing in this manner
Is it true or not?
And Peter was put in prison And morning and he had a punishment of death
All disciples and men and women and they sat on a room and cried Our apostles, you must not deliver my apostle in the hands of the hero
And right now deliver him And right now deliver him And open the gates of the prison right now
When they saw the child, they rushed away, took the son and brought him to their house
And the Lord was amazed looking into their prayers and he made the angel to go into a prison and called, took the Peter to his house
And now Peter knocked the door
And none opened it
The girl saw the child, she shouted, "The child is coming"
And so opening door and said that and Peter had come And so what he must say immediately?
What will you say? You must say, "The child is coming"
And you shouted, "Hallelujah" by telling that hearing of the prayers you brought him and so without you should not say, "How it is possible for him to come here?"
And so what we have done here?
And what the disciples showed?
And so they have not opened the door by telling, "Shout hallelujah"
And he said, "Don't open the door"
How can you come?
And one of the apostles said, "How he can come?"
What is the prayer that offer and they must break the prison? There was a wise man among them
And you know what he said?
The girl said, "The child is coming" How is it? The child is coming
And so he had another revelation telling that and it may be the angel of Peter had come, please
The child is coming
And what did they pray till now?
The child is coming And they praying the Peter to bring home that, why they don't have the believing twins? You must believe everything is possible with God And the Lord is able to change any climate
The Lord is able to change any situation
And there is no term in the dictionary of the Lord and seeing it is impossible Yes, he said, "Get some money"
And Jesus prayed in the garden of Get some money
When he prayed in the garden of Get some money and he said a prayer word and to father, "I believe everything is possible with you"
Mark 14:36
"All things are possible unto you"
And people of God, thee that are traveling in the path of Get some money And people of God, thee that are traveling the path of cross
"All things are possible unto you"
And that which is impossible with men is possible with God
If it is possible with you, surely it is possible with me
May God's holy name be glorified
And when we look onto Mark, chapter 9, verse 23
And to whom everything is possible
Mark 1:23
9:23 of Mark
"If you believe all things are possible to him that believe it"
And what is the problem here?
A little kid, he was attacked by a demon and a father brought him and told him
And there was two problems And one is sickness and another is possessed by demon
And both were mingled in him
So because of this and the son's life will always go towards death And what the spirit in him will do? It tried him to make him to die And what the sickness in him will do?
He will make him to fall low in the ground and make him to come to fix
And now the father took him to Jesus And Jesus said
If you believe and this matter become success
And you have to read the Bible in the level that you can believe And read the Christian books
And don't read the new books or different books and read the books which built up your faith
And read the divine healing messages And they that are sick must read the books And don't read some other subjects And what is your problem and read the books concerning the problem And don't read one And read nine trips You have to keep reading those books and must practice believing
And all things are possible them that believe
And Jesus said the same And when he said a word And so, and the brother was able to identify the unbelief in him was hidden in these many years
24 verses, "And so in the 24th verse, and father said unto Jesus, and cried out, Lord, I believe, and help me to come out from unbelief"
And with tears when he lost his unbeliee And this spirit departed him All things are possible unto him that believe it You are able to close your debts
And the Lord can bless you and make you great
And your sickness will flee away And you will not die and you will live and you will glorify in the name of God If you believe and these things shall be performed If you believe not and these things are impossible And if you believe, what are the signs for it?
16:17 of Mark, what it says And the signs that shall follow that believe in my name, they shall cast out demons And 14:12 of John, what it says And he that believed on me and will do greater works than me
And he will do the things which I perform also, the greater works than these all should I do 11:25 of 26 of John And so it is said that, "And they that believe it in me, and though he were dead, and yet she has lived, and he will live" And how many of you believe this?
You must believe everything is possible with God
That which is impossible with men is possible with God If you are right and everything is possible with you
If you have the spirit of gods and special spirit and excellent spirit of God, all things are possible unto you
May God's holy name be glorified If you believe and all things are possible
When we look onto book of Jeremiah
Chapter 13 And what 23rd verse says?
"Can the Ethiopian change his skin?"
And can the leopard change its spots? And that's question like this
If it is possible You can do what you can't do
And then ye may do a good and also against tempted to do evil
"Can the Ethiopian change his skin?"
And is it possible for a believer to do good? It is impossible in the Old Testament
In Old Testament, there is no power to do good But through the anointing of Holy Spirit and we receive the power to do good in the New Testament In 17:18 of Romans, and Saint Paul said, "And performing good is not found in me" In Old Testament, you cannot do what you cannot do
In Old Testament, and he who had a practice of committing evil cannot do good
A farmer went into the drying factory
And so it went inside the dye of the beans
And so, and Fox had doubt and it was it and because the color was changed
On one part and we felt shame On other part and said it was escaped and fled away And entering into the forest
And all other animals and looking into it, it was different and they started to run away
And what happened to it? And think that, and it is also good for me And so let us maintain in the same way And don't want to show that we are fox And so threatening others and it was going on its way in the same manner But all the foxes said, "I had a doubt" And so looking into the guns, it was like a fox And so when it was like a fox
All are the same, but one is the problem The sound is not controlled, it is not different because it is not means
And so it started to speak itself One day And altogether And so let us all howl like a false on one point of time And so we can see and what is going to do
All are the same, they are thinking for a while
It's unknown time and all the foxes started to howl like it
All are the same, this is forgotten And so This is a problem, it is our fault
And so all the foxes started to howl and looking into the
You are the one who does the wrong
And you have practiced to do evil and you should not do evil like Old Testament
And the sacrifice and shedding of blood and did not meet him perfect
But in Old, New Testament What the Bible says
And when we look onto Romans For the love of the spirit of life in Christ Jesus, had made me free from the law of sin and death
And what happens now? And how Jesus Christ was changed As one doing good and he went around in acts of the apostles, chapter 10, verse 38 Now what we receive?
According to James, chapter 1, verse 17 Every good gift and every perfect gift from above is come up down from the father of lights
May God's holy name be glorified And when we look onto second Chronicles, chapter 25, verse 8 and 9 And what it is said there?
And one king went to a battlefield And so, and he give a gentleman gold and call the prince Adrien
And so the amount was changed in hands And he stood on the battlefield And the prophet said And you don't have any bones for the And he said, "And you go on your way and the battle is going to turn on some other way" And he said that, "And God had power to help and to cast down" And he can make one to sit and also to cast him down And nothing is possible with God And the king said to him And what is the use of telling now? And so I lost the hundred talents of gold And so I lost hundred talents of gold Even you have put your heads in many matters
And so you may have question in you after hearing this truths and so I purchased this land for this amount and I have these things and what should I do for all these?
And so one mother and took up competition and she got a home theater in her house And she heard the truth And so one son of God said like this and she had a dog And if you share it and how now they do it? And so when it was sold and it will come for the half rate
And pastor T U said when he was ministering in abroad countries and so when he was teaching this to them and they did not sell it and they broke all the televisions What the people in Tamil Nadu, they are asking unto me and so if I am selling it, it will go for debt cheap rate and so please pray and it must go in a good rate And sometimes I forget and what is the purpose of wearing this uniform and so and he was telling that and he will get the TV and so he asked me what to do for the good rate
And one day at night 1:30 or 2 o'clock, I received a phone call And so he took up the phone call, didn't tell the matter and he cried aloud
"What is it?" "It is pinky serious" "Pinky, who is it?" "It is a problem" "Pinky is the one in the house" "We will go to the phone" "Who is it?" "I don't understand, what is it?" "Pinky is very serious" "This is pinky" "Oh, this is the same child" "Mom, dad" "Oh, it is a wolf" "It is a wolf" "I should not sleep at night" "I will go to the village"
And see, and what is the ministry in the apostle at New Testament times and so the dog is seen here that I will wake up by 1:30 and to pray for it by bending on my knees I asked Pastor Joel
And one instant of time and he did not touch the cellphone, I asked the reason And so if any urgent and they give cellphone or else and they have to pick up the line through landline
I asked what?
At night 2 o'clock, one called me like this
I asked what?
And so if it is 2 o'clock, only for emergency he would make a call
I'm picking up the call
And our people, they don't know what to do at right point of time And so the Lord said unto him, "And what shall I do for the challenge?"
Don't look unto the losses, the Lord is able to give thee much more than this
For the sake of the truth and what are you counting as loss, the Lord will give you profit as a gain to you
And so because of taking up the Bible, have you lost your possessions? And because of taking up the Bible, have you lost your lands?
And because of taking up the Bible, have you lost your lands? And because of taking up the Bible, have you lost your lands?
And because of taking up the Bible and you might have lost your possessions or your points or promotions and so what you have lost, the Lord will give you in double fold And don't look unto the losses And so that which I count as gain for the sake of Christ, I counted laws And it is possible for God to cast down one and to help others And don't feel crying and shit ears for counting laws And don't be grieved and be sorrow and it was counted loss And the Lord who called me is taking me in this path And he will lead you And he will lead you till end Then after the Lord will take you to the green pastures And so he will take you to the still waters And he that walked after the waters and wilderness, and the Lord took him to the throne And the Lord took him to a person who was in prison to throne If these things are possible with God and it is possible with God to do certain things for you in your life And some are having question, can they do overcoming life? And are we able to live a holy life? Is it possible? And so all are having this question And so that which is impossible, the Lord will never place before you And if victorious life is impossible and there is no subject called overcoming or victorious life And there is overcoming life And when you read, and the revelation, chapter 2 and 3 of the churches To whom the Lord said, "I will give you lovely things" And he that overcomeeth And I will make him the pillar And he that overcomeeth I will give you the hidden manna And he that overcomeeth And I will give you power over the nations And so only he that overcomeeth and he can certain things will be given and so overcoming life is possible with us When we look onto Matthew, chapter 20 And so a mother came with two sons And he said that, "And two of my sons must sit on either side of your throne" And Jesus said And you speak differently I think that, you know not what you are speaking And he said that somehow my sons must sit on either side of your throne And Jesus said And so you will you drink in the cup that I drink? And so will you be baptized with the baptism that I am baptized with? And what he thought? And he thought that they may be astronauts But they came with stubbornness What they said? Are you able to drink the cup that I shall drink off and they said, "Yes, Lord, we can drink" And so will you take the baptism that I was baptized with? And said that, "Yes, Lord, I have your baptisms" And so he was amazed And so they were ready to come in the path that I am traveling right now And mother is also ready to take them to that path Then after Jesus, I thought, "Lord" And he said And so it is possible for you to take the baptism that I am baptized with He shall drink indeed of my cup that I drink Even soon But to sit on my right hand or left, it is possible only it is prepared by my father And what does it mean? And you will take baptism You will receive anointing This is not important And more than all these things and there is a life of doing victorious things 3:21 of Revelation And so it is said that, "And to him that overcomeeth, will I grant to sit with me in my throne even as also overcome" And even taking baptism And so even you take part in communion The explanation, if you do not do overcoming life and you cannot come to his throne And so they must do the overcoming life for the so the messages are given for the seven churches, they must overcome Is it possible to do overcoming life or not? Those who see, it is possible, lift up your hands I ask you a question And you have drank liquor once upon a time and made you a character view to sit in this place with righteousness? You who are entangled in chain smoking or normal smoking
Terijjo, teriyamalo, chain smoking, or, normal smoking, yu, pani, kudundu, onakadala, vandu, vandu, ukaravchara, adu, jayajivee, ma, illia?
Knowingly or unknowingly, you who were entangled in chain smoking or normal smoking, and the Lord delivered you and brought you to do this of victorious life.
Kanda bukkiyam, padichin, naasama, poyikundu, onne, Bible la, padikuchara, adu, jayajivee, ma, illia?
And you who were reading unnecessary books, and the Lord brought you to this place to read the Bible, is it overcoming life or not?
Manikana ka, TV la, yu, cellu, yu, onde, narathavina, ki, valke, eve, kudundukundu, onne, manikana ka, jabatala, ukaravchara, adu, jayajivee, ma, illia?
You have wasted the time and life by spending, watching the televisions, and the Lord brought you to deliver from all these things, and made to sit in prayers, is this a overcoming life or not?
Bayangaramana, pisas, seyvan, eyalasikki, tavithu, valke, naragama, arunda, avvalke, adalala, vandu, vandu, akinara, adu, jayajivee, ma, illia?
And so, once your life was like a hill, were entangled into witchcraft and demonic possessions, and the Lord delivered you out of the problems, and made you to do this overcoming life.